All right, the time being ten o'clock, I'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Healy?
Here.
Los?
Here.
Kettering?
He is, I'm gonna call him on, via phone. He wanted to be on the speakerphone. All right, Don, I got you on speakerphone, is that okay?
I'm here, yeah.
Okay, Don is here.
Kettering?
All right, you gotta say you're here, Don. Don, are you there?
Yes.
Good.
Swenson?
Yes.
Clemmish?
Here. Do any of the commissioners have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict interest at this time? Most of us are over here.
No.
No.
No. Don, do you have a reason to?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, item number four, approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, item number five, public comment. Is there any? Anybody care to make a public comment at this time? Seeing a hearing none, I'll go ahead and close, public comment. Next item on the agenda, item number six, claims.
Yes.
Any questions on the, on the claims?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passed. All right, next item on the agenda, a 2020 wage increase for Laura Swenson. Rob, would you, were you gonna take this one, or?
I can, my, um, my understanding was that it was approved as into that number, that was that request that I made for Laura Swenson. I'm going to do, I don't have a job description for her yet, and I am sorry, I was gonna get it to you today. The job description, I believe, would be like a legal assistant, legal secretary is what I was gonna do, and then use the definition of that, and then come to like the educational or work experience to get to that level. But I'll get you that at a different time, so I do apologize for not having it to you today, but I'll try to get it to you the next meeting or the next meeting, so we have it, and then kind of follow some kind of formula on a step increase or something too, on the comment. I believe she's been here twenty-plus years.
Wow.
She's done, she's a tremendous asset to the county and to the office, and she does a great job. So I would request if, if the commission agrees and adopts that request that I made, so.
Did you want to do that today, or did you want to wait till you had the description, or what did you?
Oh, today, today, Dan, would be my request, and I'll get you the description based on where she is and what qualification she has too.
So, I guess, what is her salary now, and where is she going? I guess, to, it says, she's going to 24, 10 an hour? Where, is she close to that now, or is it a?
Dan, I, I don't know, so I do apologize.
Let me check.
Okay, we can, we can wait.
Dan, I'm okay if we want to maybe bring it up in a week or two, because I guess I wasn't necessarily thinking, but we pay at the end of the month for the beginning of the month. So the, not the next meeting, but the next meeting would probably be the time I'd bring it to you. Sorry, because I'll be gone, Eric will be here for the next one, that Tuesday, like the sixth or fifth or whatever.
Okay.
But I'm okay either way, I'm okay either way.
What does the board want to do?
She said 2061.
2061. Do we want to wait until the next meeting, or do we want to proceed today? How does the board want to handle this?
I'm okay to proceed today, I know this has been going, it's, yeah, it's been discussed for quite some time, so, or requested, I should say, yes, so, I'm okay proceeding.
Yeah, I'm okay with doing it today, too.
Okay.
But I'd just like to note, too, that Laura Swenson is no relation to me, she's a S O N, I'm a S E N, so.
Okay.
No conflict interest there.
Sure, sure. What's your thoughts, Cheryl, you wanna?
I'm good.
All right. Somebody care to make a motion on the 2020 wage increase?
Oh, I thought Don said yes.
I think he's talking to somebody else, I'm not really sure what's going on.
Um, I would make the motion, and Patty, do you want me to just include the total dollar?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Well, we need a motion to approve the position, right, Rob, first?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we gotta do a position, I, I guess without a job descrip-
It's not, it's not on the job description.
Yeah, and there isn't a job description for this, I guess, you know, as much as I, I'd like to help out Ms. Swenson right away, I guess, me personally, I'd almost like to see a job description, so we know what we're approving before we do that.
That's fine.
I mean, we're certainly, you know, that's just my opinion, but.
You can do that on January 7th.
Yeah.
When we close out the year.
That give you enough time, Rob?
That does, I'll, I'll get by that.
We'll have like old business, we'll finish that old business, and then we'll reorganize.
Okay, is that fine with everybody? I think that maybe that's a little bit cleaner, so.
Yep.
Is that all right with you, Don? We're gonna wait until we get a job description at the next meeting? You there, Don?
Will, will it be retroactive, then? Will it go to?
It'll just start in January with every other one.
Okay, well, okay.
Okay, I think Don's okay with that, so. If that's all right with everybody, we'll just do that, put that on the agenda for next meeting, is that fine with everybody?
That's fine.
With the job description, and if we could have what our pay is now and what it's going to, both hourly and yearly, I think that would be helpful, so. All right, we will have that at the next meeting. Moving on, contingency.
We have to do the raise for the employees, and then a motion for if the board is, will be getting a raise.
Where, where is that? I don't know.
That's under the wage.
The wage increase.
Is it, I didn't see, I guess I don't, all I have under that is Laura Swenson.
Yep.
You need a motion for the 2.4%.
Correct. And then the one for, that you guys decided that you weren't getting, and I need a motion for both.
Okay. So I'll make, I'll make the motion for 2020 county employee wage increase of 2.4%.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion?
And you said how many percent?
2.4.
2.4.
I have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
Aye.
Motion passed. All right. Was there anything else for that one?
Yep, enough for the four.
Okay.
So then I'll make a motion for the county commissioners' wage increase to be a 0% for 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion passed. No Christmas presents next year, I'm just kidding. All right, is anything else on the wage increases? We're finished with that one, Patty? Okay. Next item, contingency transfers. Did you want to explain any of these? It's just transferring money in to some of these accounts, correct?
The departments that are, that have a minus balance.
And would we do this all in one motion, contingency transfer, all of these? Anybody on the board have any questions about any of these contingency transfers?
The motion can be just, for contingency transfers submitted by the auditor.
Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion for the contingency transfers as recommended by our auditor.
Move to approve the contingency transfers.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passed. Next item, budget, budgeted cash transfer. So, could you explain these for a minute? Are these different than the other ones?
This is just a, a cash transfer from general fund into these two funds, highway and emergency management.
Okay.
And it's nothing extra, it's just, it's built into that budget, into the budget.
Entertain a motion for budgeted, unless, I guess, is there any question, questions first? Entertain a motion on the budgeted cash transfer as recommended by the auditor. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor, yes?
This is Don.
Yes.
My only thought was, on that, is I think it'd be nice and maybe easier for us and others to understand and reassure ourselves if, if we could have Patty take last year's proposed budget and calculate total expenditures under each major department. So we can really understand where transfers and occurred.
Do you want it for the next meeting?
For the next meeting?
Yeah, now or for the next meeting?
Is that too soon, or?
No, no.
For the next meeting, is that what you're talking about, Don?
Yeah, if we could get it, so we could look at it in January, just so we, we know, we know what departments are spending exactly, and it kind of gets, for me, it gets a little confusing during the year when we transfer funds in and out, and from the general, and the budgets are pluses and minuses on that report that we review, but I think if we, if we took the, the beginning accounts payable and the ending accounts payable and adjusted them, we could find a very accurate analysis of expenditures under each department. Good example is juvenile. You know, we probably budgeted, I don't have in front of me now, but say we budgeted 10,000, and I imagine we spent 60,000 or 70,000.
Okay.
Well, it'd be nice to know those numbers pretty precisely.
Everybody in agreeance with that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have that for the next meeting, then. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
So I had a motion and a second, is there further discussion on budgeted cash transfers? I had a motion by Healy, seconded by Los, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, next item on the agenda, the levy change. Do you want to explain this to us, to Patty?
Oh, we just, we approved the budget, and then we had an election for that new rural district.
Okay.
So the levy changed, it went up to 0.632.
Okay, and that's because of the, what's it?
New rural district.
That went out by Riverside Acres, is it?
Lewis and Clark West.
Lewis and Clark West, okay. So you just need a motion to adopt?
No, I just needed that I had, there's no motion need to be, just, I have to mention it in the minutes.
Okay, so the levy went from 0.629 to 0.632?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now we have to do is just mention it in the minutes, no resolution?
I'll put it in the minutes.
Okay. Any questions on the levy change, from anybody?
No.
Moving on, next item, well.
I, on the, on the budgeted cash transfer and all these cash, the contingency transfers, if any of these departments are in, in the red, or especially cash is in the red, then the state auditors do not like that, and I get written up for that if it is in the hole. So that's why we have to do the cash transfers and the budget transfers.
Well, we don't want to get you in trouble, Patty.
I don't want to get you in trouble.
All righty, that makes sense. All right, well, we got a few minutes before our hearing for temporary 2020 zoning, so. Four minutes, we're ahead of schedule, that's always nice. All right, the time being, 10:20, we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, hearing for an emergency temporary 2020 zoning ordinance and map. Gary, did you want to explain this to us, or?
Basically, we've been talking about for a while, and we've had a number of public comments in regards, maybe it's, oh, basically, we've been talking for a while, and we've had a lot of public comment about possibly moving forward on a temporary emergency zoning ordinance change, so basically, this is what's in front of you today. We just took, took the current ordinance and took out all the old affidavits, publications, dates, and things, and just made that the new temporary zoning ordinance, as shown with a new name.
So is there any changes to, to, to anything from the current zoning ordinance we have, minus notifications and? There is not. Not one letter, or not one word has changed? This is the same zoning ordinance we've been living under for 13, going on 14 years, so, okay. Any questions for Mr. Vedder from the board? Anyone from the audience care to speak on this? Now would be the time to do so. Would you like to speak, Mr. Don?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome, thank you. My name is Brian Donahue, and I'm an attorney from Sioux Falls. I represent Carl Schenk and Joshua Johnson in regard to zoning matters here in Anken County that are ongoing, and I actually had several questions about this emergency ordinance. The specific statute that this is being adopted under is SDCL 11-2-10, which only allows emergency measures for limited purposes in an emergency, and it requires that the purpose be protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare, and the statute actually says that you can adopt, quote, "as emergency measures, a temporary zoning ordinance and map, and a temporary subdivision ordinance, the purposes of which are to classify and regulate uses and related matters as constitutes the emergency," end quote. It's not clear to me exactly what the emergency is, and the reason why I bring this up is because I believe it was precipitated by pleadings that were filed by my client, Carl Schenk, in mid-November relating to just a small part of your ordinance, the 2006 amendments. And in that regard, it would not appear that a wholesale adoption of the entire set of zoning ordinances could any way, shape, or form be necessary to address any emergency because there's been no court or other determination on those 2006 amendments being void. And in fact, we've asked repeatedly, is there some evidence that would provide for a basis to say that the 2006 amendments were properly adopted? If not, if there would be any admission by the county that they were not properly adopted, then they would be void, and both my clients would be entitled to building permits, and we've applied to those building permits and been denied, on the basis that there's been no court determination that those amendments are void. Now, if this is actually an emergency, it can only be an emergency if, in fact, that 2006 set of amendments is void, so you have two issues. One is, why adopt it for something beyond the 2006 amendments, instead of just adopting the 2006 amendments? But more importantly, this would appear to be admission that the 2006 amendments are void, and therefore, why would my clients' building permits deny? Or are we just going to go through the entire process here and then have SEC 11-2-10.1 apply, which will be an injunction against the county in calling this emergency zoning ordinance void? I don't want to get into that, and have that be necessary. The problem that we have is, you've talked about this several times, but nobody's ever said, yes, in fact, we do have emergency because the zoning ordinance wasn't properly adopted. If that is the case, if there is still some consideration of studies, and that's, that's actually what's set forth in the zoning ordinance, a comprehensive plan, and then things to address the specific land uses. If you're going to study something within that, I could understand where you might try to apply 11-2-10 to address whatever the specific study is about. I'm not sure that there's any study that's being conducted for the entirety of the zoning ordinance, I don't know what that would be. And so, throwing out all of these things here for you to consider, it would seem impossible that the county could be in such a state of emergency that would be required to actually adopt this wholesale. If you're adopting something on a contingency basis, just in case a court does rule against the county, I don't understand how that can be an emergency. And furthermore, my clients have never said they would do anything different with their buildings, they simply want to have this issue resolved, get the building permits, move on. So, my clients have not made it an emergency because their simple requests are consistent with building permits that they already had, or any other issues that they might bring up prospectively for new building permits would be consistent with what they've done in the past, and if there's some public safety matter or public health matter, that needs to be addressed by this county and identified specifically to form the basis for any emergency measures here. You're not doing that, you're just going way beyond that. So with all that being said, I also question why you're short-circuiting the process and so forth in the statutes for planning commission input. In fact, what you're adopting, according to the packet that has been presented to the county commission here for this meeting, it says it was, it was considered by, or it was drafted by the planning commission and the county commission. There's no dates for that, it's on the face page of the ordinance that you're proposing to adopt, and I don't understand how that could possibly be. I'm not aware of any county commission or planning commission meeting in which the specifics of this particular emergency measure were considered. I know there was a lot of talk in general about things, but it was never discussed in detail, and then suddenly, there's a hearing notice the Saturday before Christmas, and then this meeting held between Christmas and New Year's on an alleged emergency basis, and in fact, during a day when there is no travel advised in the Anken County. Obviously, I'm here, my clients are represented, we're not claiming that they weren't able to get here, unlike other meetings, where we haven't been able to be here and have representation, but that's the point. We've made extra efforts to get here to address this because in the past, it's just been ignored or we haven't had our, or was heard, and in regard to the process that's set up in the statutes, the county is supposed to go through that process for specific reasons, most important of which is that if you look at the Pennington County case versus Moore from 1994, that this county may be relying on, that first ruled that it would be, in fact, necessary to hold an improperly enacted zoning ordinance void, well, that county was subject to the entire zoning ordinance at that time being declared void, and so there was some language in that particular Supreme Court ruling that talked about how to prevent chaos and have emergency hearings and things like that with SDCL 11-2-10. That's not the situation.
Thank you.
We've not raised that issue in regard to the entire ordinance being invalid, that's not what we're talking about. And to the extent that the process allows for landowners whose rights are being taken away by the ordinances here, you're required to go through that planning commission process, then the county commission process, and if you don't, then it's void.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Would anyone else care to speak on this topic? Now would be the time to do so. All right, seeing and hearing none. Go back to the board, any questions from the board?
I have a question for the attorney.
Go ahead.
Mr. Donahue, is it Donahue?
Yes, sir.
You represent Johnsons and Carl Schenk?
Joshua Johnson and Carl Schenk.
Okay, I just got a simple question. Mr. Johnson, how many hog barn CAFOs does he currently have in operation right now?
I believe Mr. Johnson has none.
None?
He was constructing his first barn, and has been subject to the requirement that he appeared for the board of adjustment on, on the issue of the permit.
Okay, that's right, that's his, that's his dad that's got the other one. They don't have the same one. His dad is Louis.
I represent Joshua Johnson on the one, I'm not aware of.
Okay, he has none, okay, but it, okay. The other question is, how many hog barn CAFOs does Carl Schenk currently have in operation?
I'm not here to address the number of hog barns that he has now.
No, I'm just asking you a question.
And you asked that at the other hearing, and it was not pertinent to that hearing, I don't believe it's pertinent to this hearing, to the extent that it would be.
It's about nine, isn't it?
To the extent that it would be, I would have to have.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I don't hear too good, so, or, niner, like we called it in the Army.
And you know what? If he had more that he was seeking, he would still have the same rights.
I'm not saying, I just asked the numerical number. He has, he has about nine CAFO hog barns, correct?
That's a matter of public record, and I am not going to sit here and debate with you.
I'm not debating, I just asked a question.
All right, thanks, Gary, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone on the board?
My, my, this is Don. My question would be for, to Gary, and I don't, I don't recall the technical word for the process, but when you go in and review a document, and you make changes in that document, is, is it not a process where you can highlight deletions and additions so that we can see and, and, and without reading line for line on each document to ensure that there are no material changes?
Don, that, that is one of the things that was discussed, and, and one of the comments that was made is that since they were moving forward on a, on a new, new article, 2020, basically, that they wanted a fresh copy with everything cleaned out, so.
You know, I've reviewed this over the weekend with the zoning ordinance we have, and I could not find one single letter that was different than the original. Now, there's been notifications that have been removed, and there's places where it said amended in 2006 or 2008. Now, those have been cleaned up, but as far as any of the definitions or anything like that, it is verbatim of what we have now.
Well, I reviewed it too, Dan, and I found the same thing, I didn't find the deletions, but I didn't find any changes, but I just, there is a process that, that you can show red-line changes in documents from one to another, it makes it a lot simpler than going through 198 pages of reading line by line.
I guess, it also makes it a lot messier if you have, you know?
Well, I think that can be.
Fifty pages that are red-lined out, I mean, it kind of makes it, in my opinion, messier as, as well, I get your point, but, sorry, did you?
Well, I didn't say, I think that can be provided, maybe.
Well, I didn't say, I think that can be provided, maybe not at this very second, but. I mean, to my knowledge, and, and Mr. Vedder is the one that went through this and can attest, I guess, the, that there was no change to the, the meat of the ordinance, if you want to call it, other than removing some of the updates in the affidavits previously put in there.
Well, and, and my thoughts are it's, it's extremely important that we have a zoning ordinance in place that, that effectively manages the rules of the county. And so I, 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 I believe if, if a tech, if, if the ordinance can be put in place in the process that we're going through, it, it, it's, it's better than the option of not having any zoning at all in the county.
I would agree.
Since we don't know legally, we're right on those 2006 actions. I, I think we do need to have some zoning in place.
I would agree, Don, we have to take, protect the safety, health and welfare of the community.
You know, and all the discussions for the 2006 changes happened in 2006. And there, there's a reason we got this ordinance to where we're at today. And you're, one of the concerns with, with this being challenged today is it's not restricted to, to, to applicants that, that the, Mr. Donahue represents it. There's been numerous new applications, assuming that the 2006 is going to be thrown out. And, and some of those are in places, according to the ordinance today, they would not be cited. And so, you know, I certainly think there's concern for the safety, health and welfare of the county in that regard.
Yeah, we've been following under these rules for almost 14 years and to have these rules pulled out from under us, that could create, and, you know, a real, real emergency. Did you have anything, Sherry?
No, my understanding is other counties have been in the same situation recently and essentially re-adopted their entire ordinance again. You can be challenged on anything these days.
I will add, I think it is imperative that when we enact this, that we do diligently look towards, through the comprehensive plan, look to, to a re-adoption of the ordinance and make sure that we are going through the steps and making sure this is exactly where the county needs to be and where we in fact do want to be.
Would agree.
So an analogy would be kind of like, okay, you're just getting remarried again. Got to put a little humor in this, you know? Can't be so serious.
Yeah, exactly. And I, I spoke with, with Mr. Vedder and we spoke with attorney Zach Peterson, who deals with zoning, and he said this is one of the clearest cases and examples he's seen where we need emergency zoning controls. Other counties have implemented them where they just might not have zoning and we, and we really do have an emergency in, in my opinion. And we have an obligation to protect the safety, health and welfare of our community. Did you have anything else you'd like to add, Don?
Well, I, I don't know about the level of emergency and I haven't followed the numbers.
Sure.
The applications in December, but. We need to, we need to get the final thing adjusted, the final comprehensive adjusted to the place that we want it to be as soon as we possibly can.
I would agree, 100%. Anything else from anyone on the board? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'd move to adopt a document, Yankton County Zoning Ordinance 2020, presented pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 11-2-10.
Can we add, in order to protect the safety, health and welfare of Yankton County?
In order to protect the healthy, health, safety and welfare of Yankton County.
Does that sound like a good motion, Rob, for this?
You're intent on what you're trying to do?
Yeah, yeah. Good, okay. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
My only concern on the whole thing is that we haven't made a strategic or error in, in transition from the original one to this one that, that makes a meaningful change in any of the categories. We're all familiar with, with the old one. I'm not sure we've all had time to review and go through this one in the detail that it takes.
This is the same as?
To make sure there's no change.
Okay. Well, I, I know I've gone through every single page and, and there is no change from this one to the one we've been working under, under for the last 14 years. But I'd be willing to, I guess Commissioner Healy and I can sit down and go through with this and give a report at the next meeting and a path forward.
Well, I think also the path forward, you know, this would be, be the emergency, emergency controls in place and then the path forward is to go through the proper channels of, the county, the planning and zoning commission review, as well as the county commission review and then officially adopt.
Yeah.
Adopt anything.
Does that answer your question, Don?
Yep.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Healy?
Yes.
Lost?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Plumish?
Yes. Motion passed. Did you want to stay on the phone for the approval of the road safety improvement project, Don?
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll keep you, we'll, we'll keep you here. All right, next item on the agenda, item number eight, approval of the road safety improvement project with South Dakota DOT. Mr. Slobodchek, welcome.
I guess this is pretty simple. It's a program that the DOT puts out, it's 100% paid for. And what it is, is rumble strip signing project, where our signing project is done, putting rumble strips in before a few stop signs areas. 430, 448, 451, 303, 431, 294 and 435. I can get you a better description on them if you want. Mainly where they are adjoining a state highway. It's like 435, that'd be just north of, it'd be Utica Road, just north of 50, just south of 46. Them two areas, same at 430, just north of 50, south of 46. So, and this is all 100% paid for by the state.
I like that.
I guess all I need is a contract signed. I can top the other minutes and I can turn it in to the DOT.
Any questions from anyone on the board on this? Any questions from anyone on the, in the audience? So I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the State of South Dakota Joint Powers Financial and Maintenance Agreement between Department of Transportation and Yankton County for 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lost?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed. You want to give us a quick update on Jamesville Bridge while you're here?
Not much is changed on Jamesville. We're waiting for quotes to be returned. I guess that's the next step, so as soon as we get something back from the contractor, we'll bring it to, to front of the commission here, we guys will approve which contractor built it.
Top, or when, when do you think we're going to have that, by?
Hoping within the next week or two.
By next meeting, hopefully. Top priority.
Next week is going to be tough.
All right, do what you can.
So, holidays and everything, it's just.
Sure. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Slobodchek? Thank you very much.
Stay warm.
Thanks, Mike.
Stay warm, yeah, get those roads safe. Gary, do you think we need a separate motion for, to approve the map as well? I guess I was thinking about that. Let's, I want to go back to item number seven, because we did an emergency temporary zoning ordinance and a map. So I think maybe we should do a?
Yes, I would agree that.
A motion to adopt the map as well.
Have the chair sign.
So we did adopt the temporary zoning ordinance, but we also, I feel. Do you, do you think that's the right way to do it, Mr. State's Attorney, adopt the map as well?
If that's what your intent is, that's included in there.
Okay. Somebody care to make a motion on adopting the, the map as well?
Make a motion to adopt the Yankton County zoning map as presented pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law Lost 11-2-10.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Lost?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Plumish?
Yes. Motion passed. All right. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, public comment. All right, anybody care to make a public comment at this time? Right, seeing or hearing none, go ahead and close public comment. And next item on the agenda, item number 10, items for next meeting. We already had the wage increase for Mrs. Swenson. And then I, I will get?
Jessica Atkinson on there as well.
Okay, Jessica Atkinson. Did you have anything you'd like to add for the next meeting, Mr. Swenson?
Think so.
Okay. Joe, Sherry?
Not this time, no.
And the, the final P and L from 2019. I think that's what Don was asking for essentially.
Did you have anything, Don, you'd like to add for the next meeting?
Uh, no other, uh, budgeted houses.
Okay.
When it comes up, I don't, the next meeting's too soon, but sometime in the month of January.
Okay. And then I'll get with Commissioner Healy and we will get a plan together for zoning, adoption of zoning ordinance. Anything else from anybody? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everybody.